April is a busy month, so is night. And that's Montgomery Central High School. Invaledictorian Camden Cooper and salutatorian Reagan Reynolds. Please come forward. And next, Northeast High School. Invaledictorian Kara Meyer and salutatorian Michaela Coates. And next, Northwest High School. Invaledictorian Timothy Burnley and salutatorian Zolene Melendez. And next, Rossky High School. Invaledictorian Kate Dieterday and salutatorian Madison Schwartz.
We'll fix it in the post.
And from West Creek High School. Invaledictorian Arianna Anderson and salutatorian Josonia Airfield. Let's give one more big round of applause to all of our invaledictorians. And next, for the pride was able to attend tonight. As you might recall, a few weeks ago, we had the Northwest High School JRTC academic team here. They're on their spot at the national competition. And in just the past week, we have found out that cadet Taylor Hines was also be winner of the National JRTC SA Contest for the Seventh Brigade and will also be joining that team in DC this summer. So congratulations to you. And our final point of prides, and I'm letting you know, there's 26 of them. And that's a very proud number. Just a few years ago, I was standing up here with Councilman McLaughlin and we're talking about how we know CMCSUS could be the first large district in the state, not in the nation, to have 100% of our schools earn the Purple Star School Award. And I'm honored and proud to share with you tonight that we've met that accomplishment. So we now have 100% of our schools who have been named a Purple Star School Award for their dedication to our military-connected students. And as you all know, we have over 12,000 military-connected students in our school system. And so this is a representation of pride and care taken care of those. So I'm going to ask for Councilman McLaughlin and anybody else who's here from the Tennessee Military Interstate Compact, as well as our two backroom officer, Dr. Shannon Doughty, and our level directors, to please come forward. We're going to go out, but they're going to get their picture taken 26 times. So last year, we had 15 schools that either were first time or rules. Tonight, we have 26. We're going to start with our first time award recipients. Could I have representatives from Barstown Elementary School to please come forward?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, Ernst-Darren Elementary School. And next, Carmel Elementary School. And next, Clarksdale High School. And next, CMCSUS K-12 Virtual School. And next, Cumberland Heights Elementary School. And next, Kirkwood Elementary School. I'm sorry, Kenwood Elementary School. I apologize. I chipped around a few letters now, Kirkwood Elementary School. And next, Montgomery Central Elementary School. That's Montgomery Central Middle School. And next, New Providence Middle School. And next, Norman Smith Elementary School. Next, Northeast Middle School. Next, Northwest High School. That's Richview Middle School. Next, Spanish Immersion Elementary School at Barstown. And the last of our first time winners are the awardees, West Creek High School. Now, I want to ask all of our schools that renew to please come forward. I'm going to name them all just so that all of you can come forward to make one big group photo. And as they're making their way forward, I do want to share a little bit about what these win bids to earn this. So each school has criteria that they must meet and then renew every two years. That criteria includes providing resources and support to our military-connected students, appointing a point of contact for our military-connected families, providing resources on their website, and also providing training for all of the employees that they'll get to ensure that they are providing the best support for our military-connected families. So there's a lot that goes into that. We very much appreciate the Tennessee Military Interstate Compact for all the work they put into this to support our schools and to honor us with this great recognition. So we thank you very much for that. Now, these schools that renew, this means that they have earned it before, are Hazelwood Elementary School, Kenwood Middle School, Kirkwood Middle School, Oakland Elementary School, Piska Elementary School, Sango Elementary School, West Creek Elementary School, West Creek Middle School, and Woodlawn Elementary School. Congratulations to you. We appreciate everyone being here tonight. Back to the ladies, this evening's point of prides.
It doesn't. There's one more. This day. So along with the school liaison officers, Mr. Cannel and Anthony, is why this is the largest school district in the state of Tennessee to have accomplished all schools 100% Purple Star. So I have a special presentation for the governor, for Anthony, for all of the efforts on this, and just to let you know. By Bill Lee, Governor, on behalf of the people of Tennessee, to the honorable Anthony Johnson, whereas proposing special trust and confidence to your participation, patriotism, valor, and fidelity, I do hereby please present constituent appointee Colonel A. DeCam to rank as such from the date of the commission and hold such office until conditions prescribed by law. Signed, Governor Bill Lee.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I'm a little embarrassed because I don't like the attention the media reporters here can tell you. I run from the camera. But I'll let you say, this will really go to our community. Thank you all for everything you do for our military-connected families. It means a lot, so thank you.
And next, public comments. We have seven signed up tonight. First speaker, Andrew Brown. Turn the mic off when I press it down. Right, hot silver button, a timer will display. My own light will begin to flash when you're in your last minute of a lifetime. And it will have the final image automatically shown.
Hello, I'm a parent of a virtual school student. And I would like to address the board to inquire and oppose a policy that there is an activity that is on a state highway that a state trooper's office is contacting. However, we've been informed that part of the local county sheriff's office cannot direct traffic nor can actually police department direct traffic. As you may know, children are taking T-Caps, virtual students have to go to Central Services Building, and it is a hazard to get out of Central Services Office, uh, partner loft during the morning hours. Afternoon hours is not so bad, but the morning traffic hours it is because most parents are making a deaf man turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Maxwell Bearden. Did you hear the comments about the mic, sir?
Yeah, it seems a little right, but right? My name is Maxwell Jasper. My students, if they call me anything, call me Teacher Bearden. This is my fourth year of public education. I specialize in teaching students with moderate disabilities, behavioral issues, and psychiatric diagnoses. School choice is not always a choice for my students. My students have complex needs. They require specific services implemented with fidelity. They require staff that has been trained to meet their needs. The children specific to me often have specialized teams, safety plans, and radio codes. Weeks, months, even years are dedicated to these students' rights. The rights they have to be included in their educational environment. The rights they have to be differentiated instruction. The rights they have to be protected from harm, ridicule, and discrimination. In addition, I teach exclusively at Title I schools. These schools receive extra funding due to percentage of families living below the poverty line. Homeless families, unemployed families, families struggling with substance use, incarceration, and mental health problems. Students who need access to things like clothes closets, family engagement opportunities, and culturally aware education. These services cost money, large amounts of it. So when I think of the gargantuan figure, $146 million proposed to support a voucher plan, enough to make any teacher faint, it feels like a slap to the face. Enough money to provide hundreds of thousands of students and staff in pre-existing schools with the support and energy to drive. Governor Lee has signed his intent to strip this funding, using money meant for public schools to fund private educational entities. School choice is not a choice for most families. It's long since timed in that misconception. Parents can have preferences, but private schools make that final selection. And unlike public schools, private institutions have no obligation to admit, include, or accept your child. On top of that, these factors only cover a certain dollar amount, an amount which does not cover the tuition of even a single private school as yearly costs in Tennessee. A discount for wealthy families ignores the realities of poverty and discrimination. If a child is marginalized, vouchers disproportionately negatively affect them. Black, brown, disabled, immigrant, English language learners, gender diverse, or religious minority, there is little to no oversight protecting these children. Nothing to ensure their just treatment if they're even accepted in the first place. Students deserve paying free access to a quality and equitable education, meaningful inclusion opportunities, programs like fuel and free and reduced lunch, free dentists and pediatrician visits in the schools, access to communication devices, physical therapy, speech services, teachers who look like them, schools that proudly represent all students, not just the handpicked few. I want you to imagine, if you will, five or 10 years into the passage of this voucher bill. Our public schools chronically and systemically underfunded, scraping by old materials and support staff on poverty wages. Private schools bolstered by government money and build well-educated, desirable, wealthy children. Who is left in these public schools? I'll tell you who. My students. Students like mine are left in these public schools. Kids with disabilities, kids with behavioral issues, kids who learn slowly, homeless kids, abused kids, kids hoping to God that their free lunches will cut next year because it's the only real meal they get here in the week. Autistic kids and kids in wheelchairs left to sit in front of blank walls because the schools can't afford support staff. English language learners denied access to a private education because the school refuses to hire interpreters or certified instructors. You're planning willfully abandoned students that are unwanted by private schools and provides an underserved demographic with an underfunded education. And each year, dedicated staff quit, clinging to jobs with better pay and benefits. Each year, debt is collected a little less, fidelity falls through a little more. Lessons become less engaging as public schools hurry to keep up with restriction after restriction. A love of learning fades in practice and students fall through cracks. And still, that standardized testing, year after year, scores lower and lower as private schools chair connect ideal candidates and lead the rest to a broken system. And as the scores drop, so does the support, so does the funding, and it starts again. A vicious cycle for the only ones winning, where the ones more are five steps from the finish line. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, educators, families, and some of the community members. My name is Nicholas, though Trump describes me as a left-wing lunatic. Though I don't view myself that way, I view myself as a student, first handler, someone who fits all the criteria for BEI. I am here tonight not only to speak about my own experiences, but to address broader issues that affect us all. The Clarksdale Montgomery County School System is at a crossroads. And it's time to re-imaginize education, what education and safety truly mean for our students. Because when we talk about education in CMCS, we must ask, what kind of future are we preparing our students for? One that empowers them to navigate the real world or one that reduces them test scores and outdated curriculum? I'm going to tell you, it's the latter. Are we equipping them to make informed choices about their bodies and relationships? In a state that is pro-life, I expect the latter. Are we investing in life skills they'll actually use or merely in growth memorization? Are we building safe, inclusive skills or a gaming system where too many students feel invisible, judged, or left behind? Education is more than academic success. Take it from me, it's about the kind of people we are becoming in schools. Every student deserves new value for who they are, not confirmed through labels, stereotypes. Yet too often, the identities of students like me are reduced to one-dimensional definitions. We are judged by a single test score, a standardized test measure that can't capture the full complexity of our lives, our potential, or our worth. This doesn't just silence us, it erases the very essence of our humanity. I ask you today, why my words, my ability to care, and my contribution to this community be any less significant because of what others assume about me based on test score or a label? The question isn't just for me, it's for all of us because we're serious about equity, safety, and success. And we must recognize that real education goes far beyond EOCs and GPAs. It requires us to meet students where they are, nurture their growth in every dimension, not just where they show on a spreadsheet. Let's begin with one of the most urgent and overlooked needs in our school, our family life curriculum. As a gay man, as a student who recently was engaged in this curriculum, I am appalled. I can attest, I can attest that it's outdated, incomplete, and fail to prepare students for the role-oriented challenges they face. It focuses narrowly on reproduction of puberty, leaving out indefinite explanations of consent, foster relationship boundaries, and STI convention. I would like to add that maybe LGBTQ+ topics shouldn't be only talked about when discussing HIDE. As a gay man myself, I should not be left behind out of the curriculum. If we stay, if we say we don't need BEI, then why shouldn't, why hasn't my presence been spoken about enough? Because this is true, then this is not radical inclusion, but explicit exclusion. But how can students function in this world if they cannot focus? Let me tell you an experience that these students are really focused on. This very morning, I was drawn to the Nazi symbol etched in the death behind me. Why wouldn't I feel safe when I knew that my fear is near? Too many students are bullied, excluded, or discriminated against simply for who they are, whether it's because of their race, gender identity, neurodivergence, or background. Students are being told in subtle and direct ways that they do not belong. This cannot continue. As a member of my people called Kenwood, I do not see a hood, I see a community of lost, broken people, broken down by this very board. Because we cannot learn if they do not feel safe, and safety is not a privilege, it is a right. Your right as a board is to listen to the people who are most impacted, the students themselves. We are treated like prisoners in our OFO time and time again. Students are told to speak up only to be ignored when they do. Students become nothing more than planning, sorry, student governors become nothing more than planning pep rallies while their real decisions are made without us. This has to change. Give students a real seat at this table. We must create student advisory boards that meet regulators, district leaders, implement student representation on school committees, ensure surveys, action, and foreign policy. Someone that's bored, fails, or lacks, the challenge is facing the CMCS cut deep, they are not beyond our reach. We can make comprehensive education, prioritize role-oriented skills, fix the cracks in our system, foster good systems, violence, and uplift students' voices, increase schools that don't just educate, but empower. Real change gives us all, someone this board seems to power behind. It gives courage, consistency, and compassion. Thank you for your tire and your willingness to listen.
Hello, my name is Garfield Scott. I'm a concerned citizen of District Sixty. A past student, past parent, future grandfather of a C M S S student. A member of the Black Community Trustee for Montgomery County Democratic Party. To present the Montgomery County Democratic Party Resolution. Okay, I just handed it to you. We are called by Aaron Mayberry, who stands down for the C M C S S School Board. To represent my community, to point out the conflict of interest in Mr. Mayberry serving at the state representative, or also serving as a school board. To highlight the important role of diversity and equity in our public schools. Give your voice to immigrant children in our communities. I am a product of Montgomery County School System. I would not be where I am today without the education provided to me. In other days, can the past students of color were not given people chances to succeed? The Black community does not want to go back to those days. As a parent and a grandparent of Black children, it is very important to me that the people make decisions about our public school. Understand that diversity makes our whole begin to be stronger. Our Black and Brown children need to see Black and Brown teachers in their classrooms as role models. I love my teachers. It may matter, it may matter. All right, it is also important that we keep equity in our schools so that all students are treated fairly when it comes to discipline, access, and opportunities. Aaron Mayberry represents a special interest group and partisan politics. Every day, in his position as state representative, he is actively trying to remove diversity and protection from all public schools in Tennessee. He claims without evidence that this will improve the situation of students of color. Aaron Mayberry is also in favor of preventing immigrant children from going to public schools in Tennessee. Though we feel that in the past, yet Mayberry has made it clear he does not support all children having access to a public education. He brings his partisan politics, opinion, and duty, his role as school board member. How can this man remain on the school board when he is firmly against keeping our school? Keeping our school a safe and equitable place for all of our students? How can he stay on the board? School Board, when he is actively trying to public, these public funds for private schools, listen to that private school. How can we trust him to make a decision for our migrant students? And he does not, migrant students, when he does not believe in all children who lay up in the state of Tennessee. Should be able to school, to get a little school here. It is my opinion that Aaron Mayberry is not a fair advocate for school child. See, Montgomery County hand that picture, he immediately stepped down from the C M C S S School Board. I'm named Garfield Scott, and I have a whole lot of experience in the public school system. And I got a beautiful grandson who's getting ready to start school, he's just turned six. And I love him to death, I don't want diversity and equity to disappear. When I started school, I didn't have a P E uniform, I was poor. And my P E teacher beat me every day because he said I was out of the uniform. Think about that, everyone, don't ever want to return to something like that again. He would, but there was two of them, there was Coach Two, his father and son. Oh man, his son was amazing. His father, when I got to Burke School over there, he beat me just because I didn't have a uniform. Think about that. Oh, that's hard, I agree, time to think about that, it just brings back awful memories. And I don't ever want that for my grandson, my kids, of his grade kids. I want everybody to be safe in our public schools, whether you're poor, black, white, upper class. Just be considerate of people, thank you.
Recently, I had the privilege of volunteering as a proponent for a T C A, a carnel. And I can tell you, I am not smart in a third layer, this is a tough test, it's a hard test. I wanted to send my heartfelt gratitude to the incredible teachers whose unwavering dedication to their students is truly inspiring. The experience brought me back a wave of nostalgia as our son once attended carnel and was the only Black child in this class from second to fifth grade. It made me reflect, how often have any of you been the only person of your race and room? When have you been seen as a representative of an entire race? Have your qualifications been questioned simply because of the color of your skin? Diversity, equity, and inclusion is about being unqualified. It's about breaking down barriers like the absence of nepotism or being born in the wrong zip code. It's about creating opportunities where there historically have not been or have been denied. This is for the family pastor who is conveniently not here tonight. This part is for you, I noticed that you used my LinkedIn profile at four A M. I don't know what I need to know what I do, but I know what you're trying to do. Perhaps your time would be better spent focusing on your family during these former years. Unlike you, I don't have a privilege of mediocrity. I'm a veteran, holding multiple certifications, and have earned a graduate degree. You, however, went to medical college. I am the second Black woman you've attended to silence this month. Out of over seventy-seven thousand citizens in District Sixty-Eight, you believe you're qualified to hold two seats, but you remind. Since you brought up my P T S D, I'm aware as a badge of honor, it's a testament of my resilience. It's a reminder for those that struggle silently and find encouragement in how I choose to live my life. You benefit from the privilege of failing forward. Did you vote to take over the Shelby County School today? Well, yes, you did. You do not intimidate me, if you choose to swing, that's for any of you, you better not miss. Since you appreciate the scripture here is born for you. Many will say to me in that day, Lord, Lord, have I not prophesied in thy name? And in thy name cast out devils, and in thy name have done many wonderful works. And in I will profess unto them, I have never known you. Depart from me, you go push a bit for you. Until the presence of Black and Brown children is seen with the same clarity as ever white children, the proper will versus. This is a weapon. No need to be tone deaf about what this is and the racist undertone that he felt comfortable posting on his page with. It's not okay. Y'all can pretend that we're too sensitive, all we want, we know what this means. And we want to show the petition, we have four hundred and twenty signatures. He knows veterans so much, he decided to go against him, and y'all will have to advocate for veteran candidates for veterans for a very long time. And I'm not wrong, and I'm not elected, I'm actually a moderate.
All right.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak here at this meeting. Here on behalf of Aaron Mayberry. I moved here from California about four years ago, one of the first people I met at this event. Very nice of you. And I'll tell you, I come from a place with charter schools, they had charter schools fifteen, twenty years now. And guess what? No teacher ever lost their job in public school, not once. Matter of fact, the job became easier because the loan got taken off today. So what really needs charter schools, hopefully on how to just go into charter schools. And that is what it might have. Charter schools help those that are in lower-income areas. Because those are just kids that cannot afford to go to private schools. You sit charter schools in those lower-income areas, those students become dead. I've watched it, that's what happened in California this night. And as far as this, this politically motivated push to push Democrats onto the board by the Democratic Party. It's politically motivated because they have a resolution for it. It is, in their meetings that they actually got together and decided to attack Aaron Mayberry. They did Democratic style. They picked the victim, found some charges, leaked this in the media, and raised the case to the party that was supporting it. They asked, what do the Democratic Party does? And when all those fell, they bring a racial problem. They say, oh, he's racist because he's against D E I. I'll tell you, I guess they were kind of part of the COVID matrix or something like that. And Jake wasn't able to get a job or anything like that. Because without them, I wouldn't be able to get anything, but that's not true. I grew up in time, I was a permanent action without D E I, and I did just fine. I was able to get a job, have an education, make a lot of money, buy a few houses. I didn't very well for myself, I couldn't even run itself. I didn't do it because I had hope, because they were that quiet, not, I did it because I cared. One hundred percent merit was me, that's what I did. So when you talk about that, it's all about merit. And what else can I talk about? As far as mental health goes in schools, I helped a lot of people with mental health issues. I was a police officer for a couple decades, I helped with life complications. And there's just statements of receiving mental health. And some people were comfortable, as you're invited, comfortable talking to pastors, they are to a mental health profession. So those things in a school, it's not pushing revision on anyone. It's providing that service for people that are more comfortable speaking to a pastor than to a mental health profession because their statistics are bad. And I don't think that, I've known Aaron for a while, and before he even stepped in the state office. He had these values that he holds today that he put forward when he stands up for.
So where is he? Yeah, where is he?
Well, I saw him this morning, get me? So, I love these people, they are, well, are distracted.
He's too busy to take care of the school families.
So it's amazing that stopping from validating rights or is that what?
You stop him off with Aaron's a top four.
Because I read, I was gonna read that one aloud, so. Please let the speech be, thank you. So as far as the science, I don't think that's something that should be done. You can hold two seats, science law, but you can't hold two seats. Though I, I think there's a camp where especially when you can't run for two seats at the same time, or both, because anyone else. You can't run for two seats for a time. And someday that would be fair, right for right now, science law, science rules. He speaks for every student.
Am I steady, pay you?
He wants a better life than that. I looked at, okay.
Have y'all been tested with whip with a whip? I just want to know.
G N C is spread thirty-seven degrees in the United States. And twenty-nine percent magnetic skills.
Who runs it, Republicans.
So, I mean, why would you see your student school in G N C? It doesn't seem to be that way. So if you give other choices, people can do it in finance schools. It's often wrong to get to those people that almost identify as private schools. But you can charter schools for things like that, new school choices. Because public schools sucked when I was a kid, and they still suck today.
That's not true.
They were great where I came from.
Stand, go, go sit down.
So lame.
Please, please say it, let me know.
I'm sure, but to your right.
Hi, good evening, I'm here to defend Aaron as well. I know, that's hilarious, right? My name is Alice Estaniel, I'm a refugee from the economy city of Chicago. My wife and three kids moved down here a few years ago to escape from these crazy public schools that have certain racism to everything. Boys playing girls sports and handing out condoms for three years. Before we left, I stood at the school board meeting just like this one, warning them about how dangerous opening up bathrooms to quote-unquote "all the genders." Didn't listen, and now sexual assaults are on their eyes, just like I predicted. So when we moved here, I was determined to fight my kids for being indoctrinated into an ideology that attempts to sexualize children. I even planned to run to this school board myself, but then I met Aaron. And I realized he was already doing what everything I would have done will be better. He's honest, transparent, faithful, and unlike some people, he doesn't just talk about supporting schools. He actually shows up to all of them, he's visited every school in his district. Not for photo ops or political reasons, but he actually cares and wants to be on the ground. He's a product of C M C S S, he has three kids in the system, so these policies affect his family too. Now, this group, Public Schools Strong, pretty Orwellian name if you ask me, since I've looked into the positions, and nothing they've advocated was actually strengthening public schools. These Democrats hate the fact that Aaron is not only on the school board, but is also elected as partial representative in the state house. So we're gathered here today because they filed an ethics complaint. A complaint that the Tennessee Ethics Commission dismissed this morning and referred to it as a, quote, colossal waste of time unanimously. Why? Because of what? This is straight plural though, because they can't run elections. Let's shift to what this is really about, replacing him as someone who checked all the right boxes, just not the ones that actually mattered. Now, what did Aaron do to warrant baseless complaint? They're upset because he wants to dismantle D E I in the school system. But what is D E I? It's a system that says your race, sex, orientation matters more than your merit.
No, no.
Is it that stop veteran, disabled, or religion? Those are all protected under federal law. This is about race.
It's about equity.
It's quite ironic that the same people calling Aaron racist are fighting to keep a system that ranks people by skin color. Aaron introduced a bill that said hiring should be based on merit. Imagine that, hiring the best teachers for the classroom. Would you want your surgeon chosen based on equity or skill? Your airline pilot, your presidential nominee? Sorry, tough question, you already did that. So why wouldn't you want the best educators? And just for the record, Title VI Civil Rights Act already banned racial discrimination in public schools. So defending D E I means defending something that's illegal, and yes, it's racist. They're also mad that he wants schools to stop enrolling illegal aliens. But why should legal tax-paying citizen dollars be used to educate people who aren't even supposed to be here? That's not compassion, that's theft. I mean, before someone tries to twist my words, I'm not saying these kids don't deserve an education. They do, every child does, back in their home country. Then there's this voucher outrage, they say it's undermining public schools. When I moved here, my kids resigned from failing school, we were lucky when we moved to a vice. But their friends were stuck, same chaos, same failure, because nothing ever changes. Why would a school approve if it doesn't have to? Vouchers give these kids a lifeline, and they incentivize schools to improve through competition. It's truly incredible that you want kids to be trapped and then claim that it's in their best interest. If parents want to use them in their religious goals, great, it's their money, they paid those taxes, they should decide where it goes. And it's not a violation of the separation of church and state. This country was founded on freedom of religion, not freedom from it.
Yes, that's a lie.
Uh-huh. And last week, a furious about Aaron fellow on call to their chaplains in schools, unpaid, not mandatory, just people who want help. And Tennessee, nearly one in three kids have diagnosed mental health condition, and most don't get treatment. And you want to turn away free help? I get you're allergic to anything that doesn't waste taxpayer money, but someone offers to help kids for free and that's a problem? Because someone might hear something that's true, like they're only two sexes, or men can't get pregnant? So, let's ask the obvious question. Since Aaron is doing all of this for the kids at state level, which helps out Clarksville, why would we want to remove him? Because it's effective, because he represents the values this country is bound on? They constantly game about sanctity of democracy, but the second you lose, you try to remove the man and people who Clarksville elected. Yeah, you got four hundred and twenty signatures out of, what, two hundred thousand? That's not democracy, democracy is winning elections, passing laws, representing your community, that's exactly what Aaron is doing. By default, ethics complaint is you for wasting everyone's time on this ridiculous rant, I would, but firstly, have to win an election. Thank you.
Please open the vote. Is everyone happy with, with their vote? Please close the vote. We pass the six oh. Next item will be twenty-five to twenty-six, opposing solidary budget. Is there a motion on the floor for that? Mr. Gordon, just made the motion, is there a second? A second, Chris? Be right. Any discussion? Before we vote on this, there was a statement that somebody to read, myself included. Mr. Murphy, you want to go first?
Okay. My name is Chris Lynn Aaron, declaring that I have a relative as defined in T C A forty-nine dash two dash two oh two and Clarksville Montgomery County School System employees. I am certifying the vote that I am about to cast in the best interest of the Clarksville Montgomery County School System.
I'm Ken Griffin, and I require that I have a relative as defined in T C A forty-nine dash two two oh two within Clarksville Montgomery County School System employees. I am certifying that the vote that I am about to cast is in the best interest of the Clarksville Montgomery County School System. Did not hear any discussion? So if you please open the vote. Everyone satisfied with your voting? Please close the vote. We pass the six oh. Next item is comments before government school labor law officer.
My name is Aaron Watkins, Chief of Public Safety Officer, Department of Labor. And we would like to thank the Clarksville community and our leaders for your support on military connected students, for helping us to celebrate the month of the military child. We would also like to invite the Clarksville community to our kids fest that will be on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, at Prior State Front Team Two. Thank you.
Great job, Gray.
Good evening. Since we're in full swing of testing, I'd like to remind folks that the result of a single standardized test does not tell a whole story about the efforts and growth of our students, educators, and schools. A student standardized test score does not reflect the entirety of his journey this school year. It cannot reflect the creativity or the ability to work with others, and it doesn't capture his ah-ho, his ah-ha moments, or his persistence. The teacher's evaluation score does not reflect all moments of going through a teacher's commitment to her job. Early morning lesson preparation, standing in line in the cafeteria with lunch in hand, one-on-one time with students, evenings and weekends spent raving, cold feelings, qualified five hours of sleep, and missed time with her own family. Nor does it show the money an educator spends out of her own pocket purchased materials for her classroom. An evaluation score does not exhibit a teacher's sacrifice and commitment to ensuring students receive a high-quality, well-rounded education. Neither a school design letter grade, nor a district's destination reflects a partnership between families and teachers, nor does it capture the collaboration that occurs across subjects, grade levels, and support services. It does not demonstrate the important roles that education support professionals play, or a school's culture. It does not reveal students' academic growth over the course of the year, and it does not reflect the adequacy or lack thereof educational funding. Legislative efforts to update the current standardized testing system have stalled for the year. However, it is vital that over the coming months, we all continue to have conversations with our legislators about the importance of the appropriate role of assessments and the need to protect our freedom to teach. It is equally important to remember that students, teachers, schools, and districts are all more than labels generated by standardized tests. We are a community of learners played by hardworking, highly-trained educators. The members of the Clarksville Montgomery County Education Association are proud of the work we do each day to ensure that Clarksville Montgomery County is the best place, the best place in which to work, live, live, teach, and learn. And also, I'd like to just add, despite what one speaker just did appear and said, we do have a great public school system. And we know how smart our students actually are. We don't need outsiders to come in here and downgrade them in front of us. Thank you.
Not there, sir, thank you.
No comments. Comment, as my board members, I'm gonna go first and maybe last. Uh, my first comment is that opting in the public progressive school board is a wonderful thing. The board is secure, it's service, and the voices of the entire population in this county. It also should be a thing that needs everyone respects, the person standing up to speak regardless of what they have to say. Interrupting them, and if it had been in school, you'd be acting as children, being disciplined. Uh, it's the first time I think I've ever had a public progressive up in chair in this board, where the public was not allowing speakers to speak without being another. Don't know how that can be happening in the future, but I hope it's not a situation where I have to clear the room, so the person signing up to speak can't speak, and the other time is over. Rest of the board, comments for board members. Mr. Gordon? I think Casey was first, but I'll call you first. Uh, your own?
I would like to thank all of the ones that came out to speak today, because truly, everything that you said, uh, when I take it so hard. Uh, but, you know, I am the kind of person that's, I'm gonna speak my mind. Uh, some people might not like the fact that I do speak my mind. Uh, but I think at seventy-six years old, I have a right to say what I believe is correct according to what we're trying to do. I would like to tell the teachers, uh, that you're doing the next one, I appreciate all the hard work that you've done down in the U. And I'd like to talk to the students as well, those that I've happened to show, have shown them tonight. And especially the one that spoke, I'd like to let you know that we are here for you. You know, that's what the school board is supposed to be about, education of children. We have some people that think that Clarksville Montgomery County is just a liberal mat. But we are not, we are a school district that cares about all forty thousand of our students. We have a staff that actually go into work every day with that on their mind, regardless of what other parents think about our school system. And the statement on D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that is very important to me. Because I wouldn't be where I am today if I wasn't qualified. And so you can't say that, Doctor, that D E I is a black thing. That's what Monsieur Obama would say, it's not a black thing, it's a people thing. Trying to level that out. As long as we are Americans, we need to make sure that we follow the Constitution of the United States of America. Not set rules in our own little bodies, in our own little groups, to try to bring down those that are trying to do something great for this nation. I applaud, uh, the work that all of you have done, uh, down through this, I mean, throughout this year, and as well the following. And as the chairman said, we definitely do believe that when a person speaks, they have a right to speak. You know, uh, there are people that say smart things, and there are people that say not so smart things. But the bottom line is, they still have a right to speak, why? Because this is what America is about. And last thing, I believe that if I was being addressed here tonight, I think I would have shown that, thank you.
A couple things, first, I want to say that I love that we have a student that came up and spoke. So, it was very well written and very well articulated. Um, and I wish that we would have more of that, and we actually discussed, those of you that may have not heard our last four meetings, or the one before, we discussed actually having students participate in more sessions. So the timing of that, I feel like, is perfect. And we're voting on it, or not, that's, I don't remember, it's all going forward, it's next month, we'll be voting on it. Um, so that is something really exciting to look forward to, so you're right there on the ball with us. Um, the other thing I want to say is, Mr. Murphy, I agree with you one hundred percent. I think that, um, just giving people the respect when they're up talking, whether we agree or disagree, I think everybody has an opportunity to address the board if they so please, and just being respectful is part of how we are going to work together and improve what we have going on here. So, thank you for saying that, I agree with that. Um, I have a statement from Aaron that I was gonna read, he sent me and asked me to read it to you guys. Uh, he said, "I apologize for not being able to make it tonight, this is the last day of session in the Hundred and Fourteenth General Assembly. I look forward to seeing everyone in May." I know he was bummed that he couldn't make it.
Right.
Again, famous cycle, does what I say. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I was appalled. That a citizen in Clarksville Montgomery County would call our schools a failure. As hard as the staff and I, and me having taught, that is a hard job. And he, but he never had the audacity, I think he should sign up for a day in the classroom. He would have a whole different opinion of our schools. I teach a school, wonderful job, not alone, it does all she can to make sure this district is the best in the country. That in not going to say we didn't do it, just keep them out close. Uh, we all know that it's the constituents, the voters, that hired each one of us to serve this board, and you are the ones that will fire us. Did you hear me? Listen, everyone gets one of us. So when people do what is right for public schools, you can find it. Well, we, because I'm, I'm in the district too, and I have a vote. But we don't have to tolerate nastiness, we don't have to tolerate disrespect. I've been on the other end of the spectrum, and I was highly disrespected as a chair of the board. However, I didn't lose my professional ability because other people were showing what they are made of, which is the very most difficult thing. They don't think they're much of an instance, because when you're a professional, you're gonna always be professional. It doesn't matter what's happening around you. And I'm gonna say, I didn't work with anyone. But we see what's happening, and we must not pretend that it's not wrong, because it's wrong. When it affects our children, it's wrong. I'm on this board to make sure that we're doing the best we can for children. And I said it, and I said it, when I can't do what's best for Clarksville Montgomery County schools, you know, that, I mean, I quit. I will. I do this because I'm called to do it, and I don't want to spend a lot of time. But I do resent anyone that would take a crack at this school district and say that we're not doing our job. Considering leadership, they're doing their job, and when you're down in those trenches as school teachers, it's hard work. I guarantee you, it's the hardest job on planet Earth, and not speaking of special education. So I, I just think we need to recruit some of these people to spend one day in the classroom. If you know one time, we want you to sign up and just shadow a teacher for one day. It would change the whole view of public education. This would be a great job, and we're going to continue to be the best with the public to go forward.
So, I think one of the worst things we've made up in our country is going to take in prayer at school. Uh, to look at the state of our country and, and our district and our, uh, our county now. We need some prayer, because where are, what kind of people we're just separating? And, you know, no one here wakes up and says, "I'm gonna do a horrible job today." Everyone is out there, giving the best efforts at all times, the teachers, and the teachers they laid out there. Uh, some of the children aren't the easiest to deal with, but the teachers, they show up every day, and they put in the work. We'd better come together as a, as a community, as a nation, and put children first.